All right, the meeting will come to order. And I know we...
Call to order is the school board.
You need to do a roll call, we need to do a roll call?
No, we don't.
You don't, okay. So, Karen, if you could call over for the council.
Councilmember Debbie Burtland.
Here.
Councilmember Jane Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zero.
Here.
Councilmember Tonnison.
Here.
Councilmember Benson Wong. Deputy Mayor Dan Grouse.
Here.
Mayor Bruce Bassett.
Here. And we'll have your minutes reflect that President Fronmeyer is excused for a personal commitment from tonight's session, and Director Myerson is on his way, so he'll join us as soon as he arrives.
All right. Brian, you want to... All right. So, yeah. Do you want to say again what the video is around?
Sure. This is a spotlight we have through a year, and this is our fall spotlight video that goes out to staff and students. And it talks about everything you ever needed to know in life you learned in kindergarten. So, it's a very cute, two-minute piece that I thought would be an enjoyable way to start the meeting. So, if we could queue that up.
I like learning how to write. Kindergarten students inspire me because they're so enthusiastic about learning, and they make such great games the other year.
Learning how to write the sounds and sign languages of the letters.
S. T. R. M. N. T. U.
Learning the alphabet through sign language is exciting for them because they are singing, they're moving, and they're learning something brand-new that they've never learned before. I see it here in the classroom. Children who didn't know any letters now are knowing some letters. And I had a parent email me and say her daughter had no interest in letters before she came to kindergarten, and now she's very interested, and she loves... The mother and the daughter love the song and all that she's learning.
Practice kindness, act responsibly, overcome challenges, and show respect.
Pause tour is something we do kindergarten-wide. Each class goes around the building and meets the support staff in the building and finds out where the bathroom is, where we get on the bus, and how to behave in the hallway. Okay? And right after micro, then you're going to go. And it also gives them a sense of buy-in to the school, and that there's always adults here to help them and support them. The pause tour and the sign language are just one small piece of what kindergarten is all about, that saying everything you need to know in life you learned in kindergarten is 100 percent true. They learn to share, they learn to take turns, they learn how to work hard, they learn if they keep working at something, they'll get better at it. They learn to care for other people, help other people, work in a large group, all those things.
So, there you have it. It's a nice piece that has gone out to our community. I don't know that city council members, who may not be parents, wouldn't get that, and it'd be nice for the community who don't have children in schools to see just a little spotlight of what we're about. So, with that, I think we can go back to the agenda. Very good.
So, as this is a study session, just for the public's benefit, we are more casual about those. We typically have a meal, so forgive us for eating whilst working. In addition, after the last study session, at which we had a very large turnout of both school board members and city council members, all squeezed in at the day, we decided we were going to go to this format, even though we recognize it makes it more difficult for the cameramen, but it makes it a little bit easier for us to actually function. So, we'll have an after-report and see how this works after we get through this. We've got several items on the agenda tonight. The first is youth and family services, task force update, funding challenges, needs assessment. Cindy Goodman, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the time. Welcome, state members and city council members. My first slide I'm going to show you is...
Sorry?
The first one, when you read it, my name is Tyler, in nine years I'll be an alcoholic. And I put that up there for a reason. He's a really beautiful child, truly beautiful child, and all of our kids on the island are really beautiful kids. And I want you to think about it for two reasons. One, it's the first time that we started getting into the area of prevention, and this is one of the first things I saw that really stopped me in my tracks. And it stopped a lot of us in our tracks, and I thought, oh, wow, that's really kind of true, aren't they? They're all little kids. And it also really emphasized to me that when you're talking about prevention, you're really talking about going to this age, you're talking about the norms and everything that happens during this age, so that later on, they're not drinking, they're not doing their risk behaviors. The other thing that I think is really important about this is that I want you to remember that all of our kids are beautiful, and not so... They don't seem so beautiful when they're teens, and they're pushing you away, and they're getting expelled, and they're using, they're breaking rules, they're just not nice to us sometimes. But it's really important to remember that they're all this beautiful child, and they all have potential, and we sometimes don't know who are the Tylers that in nine years will be an alcoholic. And so, it's important to keep that in mind as we do prevention. So, tonight, I'm going to kind of recap for you the task force and why we're here, what the point of it was, the findings of the task force. I would have Sherri Burke do, she was our facilitator, I believe, if you recall when we spoke last time. We would have a professional facilitator talk with this group, and then we'll talk some about the next steps. The purpose of the whole task force was, we... The people concerned with serving your youth, and it was the superintendent's office that has a good idea of what's going on at his school, great teachers, all the people that serve youth, were concerned that if we took from the issue of underage drinking, that we might have whack-a-mole, that if we lowered one rate of a risk behavior, we might see something else go up. Cutting, suicidal ideation, anxiety and depression, different things that can happen during adolescence. And so, we didn't want that. We really wanted an approach to any of our risk behaviors that would develop healthy youth, healthy youth that we didn't see these risk behaviors come out later on. So, to do that, we thought, let's bring together the people that can take on this issue, epidemiologists, people who work with youth, the people in the schools who really see these kids, who are in touch with special ed, in touch with the counseling needs, people who work in long-term change, and physicians. These are the people that see our kids. And we wanted them to be Islanders if they could, because one, and most are, I think all are more, except one, because we wanted them to really know the kids and maybe have our kids that grow up here. So, we were able to do that. We wanted them to take a look at the data, look at a really high level, and then what resonated in the data for them, and what did they consider root causes to all of their risk behaviors for youth. And the goal was to identify root causes, look at the local conditions that are unique to our island, that contribute to social-emotional risk factors later on. And that was really the goal of bringing this group together. We were hoping to use this information as we moved on with the communities that care in any prevention effort, and even looking at our treatment effort, how could we work in a concerted manner so that more of our kids were healthy. This is just a quick slide, letting you know who's on our task force. And Demet Glassi, the pediatrician on the island that many, many people know of, and was really our local champion, and she was actually the person that told me to tell Brian Johnston from Harvard View that she said for him to come on to this committee, and I think that's why he did it. So, he teaches at the University of Washington, and he actually looks at how to keep kids safe, and he looks at long-term change. So, if you can see here, he sees people, all of them, the prevention professional, actually works at a children's hospital, and works in the community, very similar to ours, but we really tried to reach out to people that could know how to look at data and have a conversation around what would be root causes, and this was our group. At this point, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to have, we worked with a person, Sherri Burke, Sherri Burke and Associates, and Sherri has worked with Tholoris Institute, she's there... She worked for 10 years with a social development research group at the University of Washington, Hawkins-Catalan. She's worked a lot with policymakers, programs, people who serve youth, in looking at what are indicators and how can you make change, and how can you help kids grow pro-social. And we used her, we worked with Sherri in the University of Washington, 2002, when we first got our MIMI grant, to even take a look at underage drinking. And so, she was one of a few facilitators that we considered for this group, and so I'd like to welcome Sherri up here, and Sherri can talk about kind of all the whole process right.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for coming out on such a lovely evening, being inside here with no windows. My task, as Cindy said, is to share with you the findings of this group of experts that we convened. And this first slide is really to set the context, because we're talking about a healthy youth initiative. And this is one national organization's definition or the indicators that they use for healthy youth. It's one of many. There are other organizations that use other terms, other constructs, but what they all have in common is that they focus on the whole-child approach to development, and that's where we started with this group of task force members. So, we're thinking about all of the areas of young people's lives and what they need in order to thrive and grow up to be the kinds of adults that we want to share our community with, and the kinds of adults that we want to send out into the world from our community. So, our work with the task force was grounded in the research of Dr. Sunny Luthar, who some of you probably know of. She worked on the island about eight years ago, I think, and she did some of the groundbreaking research on communities like ours. The bulk of my work for 25 years has been in high-risk communities and research and translating research on the factors that impact kids in high-risk communities. As you can well imagine, federal funders and private funders are much more interested in funding research on kids at high risk than they are in funding research for communities like ours. So, Dr. Luthar was one of the first to say, hey, but some of those kids are also at risk. There are different pathways to risk in affluent communities, and there are different manifestations of how risk shows up in kids in communities like ours. So, we started with that, and our work with the task force started with looking at the best data we have available. One of the things that Dr. Luthar and some of her successors have found is that the kind of data that's typically collected on youth, problem behavior, on youth health and development, sometimes misses some of the characteristics, the issues that are significant in communities like ours. So, because of that, when we look at the data that we collect, which is similar to what other communities around the country collect on our youth, when we look at that, we have to dig a little bit deeper than you might have to in a community that was at higher risk, to really understand how these problems are beginning and how they manifest in kids in our kind of community. So, what we did with the task force is, we gave them the best, the highest-quality data we have, and we have some great data. We have the Healthy Youth Survey, which has been done, somebody correct me, every two years here, has been done in Washington State for well over 20 years, and is the basis of a national survey that's done around the country. We also have some survey that's come out of the communities that care process, but we have a lot of good data that we started with them, started them with. Then what we did is, we led them through a series of questions that were designed to bring their professional expertise and their experience working with youth in our community to bear on that data, to really get underneath the data, to understand some of these root causes, the factors that might be leading to problems in our community, as well as to get their feedback on what's missing. So, we know from Dr. Luthar and others' research that the profile of data we currently have doesn't tell the full picture of kids in communities like ours. So, part of what we wanted from them is to say what's missing, and then to help us look at this data in a deeper way. From that, we came up, sort of took their feedback, and put it into five categories that we're calling the root causes. And what I'm going to do is go over each of these, I'm going to give you a brief explanation of what those words mean, and then I'm going to share with you a little bit of data, one or two pieces for each of these factors, as well as, in some cases, some comments or some feedback, or some thoughts that came from task force members themselves. The first one is family functioning, and this one has to do with communication within families, with relationships within families, and with the way parents manage the behavior in their families. And some of you who are familiar with the communities that care process may know that this was a priority risk factor that was identified through that process for underage drinking and for other drug use. So, it's surfacing again in the data, despite a lot of hard work over the last eight years or so by the CDC group. Couple of things I think that are interesting is, we found that 44 percent of high schoolers said that their family, only 44 percent, said that their family has clear rules, that they pay attention to whether or not the rules are being followed, and that appropriate consequences are applied when the rules aren't followed. Forty-four percent. These are the elements that research has repeatedly found are the three elements that are important for effective family management. So, well over half of our kids are not getting that important family management practice. And again, we found that to be true in the case of expectations, monitoring, and consequences with respect to drug and alcohol use. We also found, I think this one is really interesting, 72 percent of our students say that their parents tell them they love them often. Like, we do that well in our community. However, only 31 percent of students say that they have meaningful conversations on a regular basis with their parents. Only 31 percent of kids say that they would go to their parents if they had a difficult issue to discuss. So, that to me is really interesting. We're good at telling our kids that we love them. I don't know about you, but I tell my kids a lot, about four of them, that they're special. We think of all of our kids being special. So, we tell them we love them, but what research shows us is that it's by these clear standards, monitoring, and consequences, that we're really building the love and the bonding that kids need in order to develop in a healthy way. So, that was a really interesting and sort of dissident piece of data that we looked at. Another one that kind of shocked me is, 26 percent of 12th graders say that it's not important to be honest with their parents. So, if you've got a 12th grader, be going home and talking to them, seeing if they're one of those 26 percent. The second one we looked at was health-seeking stigma, and this one has to do with mental health, particularly a stigma that appears to be in place in our community about seeking help, and this is both for adults and for youth. We know that mental health problems are alive and well in this community, again, for both youth and for children. And what we heard, what we seeped in the data and heard from our task force members is that there's this sort of a veneer that kids and parents have around themselves, this veneer of perfection, and that it's believed by parents and by families, that this is required to make sure that their kids are able to function in the pressure cooker environment that they operate in in this community. So, to ask for help, to admit that you have a problem, sort of shatters that veneer. So, that's, especially the therapists that we're working on our task force, said that that's an issue that prevents families and kids from asking for help. So, a few pieces of data we have about levels of mental health problems themselves, we had 20 percent of 8th graders who reported they'd been depressed in the last year. This isn't your typical teenage or adult, I'm having a bad day. This is the clinical definition of depression, which is two weeks or more of feeling so sad or hopeless that you can't go about your daily activities. So, that's a lot of 8th graders who are saying they're depressed. Dr. Luthar's research showed that our students, both middle school and high school students, have higher levels of anxiety or anxiousness than the norm, again, in both levels of middle school and high school. We also had 16 percent of 8th graders, this one kind of shocked me too, who had considered suicide, and 7 percent, according to the data we looked at, said they've attempted suicide. That's a lot of 8th graders. But what's really shocking is that when you ask kids if they will ask for help, if they would ask for help if they were depressed, they were anxious, if they were suicidal, 13 percent of our students said they would ask for help. Interestingly, 54 percent of them said they would encourage a friend to ask for help. So, what we're hearing there is that there are real mental health issues, but kids are reluctant to ask for help. We heard from our task force members that one of the other issues they identified is that there are things, ways that mental health problems manifest that are fairly typical of communities like ours, but we don't measure. So, we're not measuring, we're not tracking cutting, we're not tracking eating disorders, we're not tracking sleep disorders. In fact, Dr. Glassi, one of the first things she said is, we have to pay attention to the number of kids who are sleep-deprived and have sleep, actually have deep sleep disorders. So, that's another whole category we looked at. The third one we looked at was a definition of success in this community, and we talked a lot about this. Dr. Luthar describes this as the unrelenting pressure to excel at everything they do. And if you think about everything they do, that means excelling academically, being a sports superstar in multiple sports, of course, being a first-chair violin, and doing the best in your voluntary activities. We're an exceptional community, but we still are a group of people who form a bell curve. And we really heard from the experts on our task force that kids always felt that the bar was really, really high, and we're operating in sort of this pressure cooker environment. So, data from Dr. Luthar's studies showed very high levels of perfectionism and fear of failure, which are correlated with mental health problems. Another thing that we found was interesting is this, 74 percent of students say they're motivated to do well in school. Only 58 percent are actively engaged in what they're learning, and fewer than half of them enjoy school on a regular basis. So, again, what we heard from some of our task force members is that a lot of our students have learned how to do school well. They've learned how to play the game, but they may be missing out on a passion for a particular academic subject, and they're really not engaged in enjoying their schooling. And there is some research that shows they may, in fact, not be learning as deeply as we would want them to be learning. So, that was another area. Some of the research that we, another piece of the research that we looked at said that, and this one's a little frightening as well, when the stakes are so high, kids find a way to keep up with the stakes. We found that 18 percent of 10th graders and 30 percent of 12th graders say it's sometimes okay to cheat, which is a little disturbing. Another thing, a piece of information we got from one of our task force members, a counselor at the high school, told a story about a young woman who came into his, into see him, and was devastated because she was worried that her 3.76 GPA was going to preclude her going to college. Now, of course, what she meant was that a 3.76 GPA was going to preclude her from going to the kind of college she wanted to go to, but she was devastated, that her life was ending because she had such a horrible GPA. Another piece of information about that definition of success. The third one is work hard, play hard, an attitude of work hard, play hard. Then this comes from Dr. Luthar. And we hear a lot from parents, I hear this sometimes from my neighbors, when I tell them that their kids, that they're out of town and their kids have been, had a bunch of kids over to drink, and they say they're good kids, they just need to let out some steam, let off some steam. And we hear it from kids as well, that they work hard, and then they have to party hard. And much of this data, you've probably heard before, because it has to do with the work that's been happening related to underage drinking. Over 50 percent of 12th graders say that they, that drinking regularly is not a problem for kids their age. Almost half of them said that smoking marijuana isn't wrong for kids their age, and that's pre-legalized recreational marijuana in this state. What comes to is, 10th graders, 16 percent have had at least one episode of binge drinking in the last month, and 14 percent had used marijuana. And one of the things that Dr. Luthar's research suggests is that kids in affluent communities are more likely, that kids in higher-risk communities, to use high-risk behaviors, particularly alcohol and other drugs, as a way to manage stress and anxiety, and that's part of what we heard from the task force members as well. The last one is institutionalization and internalization, and this has to do with all of us, parents. I have four children, two of whom went to school here. I was a teacher, was married to a teacher for three years. So, all of us, parents, community members, community leaders, like the folks in this room, we all have a stake in ensuring that our kids feel as though they are more than their GPA or their resume that they send off to college. And in fact, the data shows us that our kids are not actually getting that message. Only 33 percent of high school students say that they have neighbors who care about them, 33 percent. Only 21 percent of students said that they feel valued, cared about, and important to people in their community. Only 39 percent of students said that they have a caring, encouraging environment at school. Now, notice that they're getting more at school than they're getting in their communities. We also heard the word passion a lot from our, in our discussions with the task force members, and it was in the context of absence of passion for many of our kids. And they said things like, kids aren't encouraged, that they're not timed to follow their passion because they're busily moving through the college prep, and they're trying to get into the good school, and that they're not experiencing passion because of the high-stakes sort of pressure cooker environment that they find themselves in. Cindy talks about a young man that she's been in contact to, who sort of copped the grass ring that we all hope for, for our kids, ended up in a prestigious medical school, and came back on a break and said to her, I made it here, but I didn't have much fun doing it. And that kind of really firmly strikes me as what we may be taking away from of our kids, from some of our kids, even while what we're doing for them is the right thing, maybe just a little too much, you know, maybe a little bit too much for some kids. We know that some kids, mostly by virtue of their internal resources and their temperament, are going to be able to stand up well to a really high-stress environment, a competitive environment. There are other kids who really can't thrive in those environments. We have kids who are doing really well in that environment. We have a group of kids who are doing pretty well, they're doing well at what we tell them they do well at, right? So, they're doing well at school, they're doing well at sports. I've done parent education all across the country for over 20 years, and one of the first things I used to do when I was, when I was working with parents is I would say, whatever age your child is now, fast forward, and your child is now 25 or 30, imagine they're coming home and having a family dinner with you. Looking at that child at 25 or 30, what do you want them to be like? What do you want for that child? First thing, wherever I go, people say, is happy. And yet, a lot of kids are telling us that the message they're getting is not about happiness and fulfillment, it's about this competitive, you know, get to the right college, get a good job, make a lot of money. In fact, we had, again, the counselor, high school counselor, tell us, he routinely says, what do you want? What are you looking for in college? I want a college where I can get a good education, so I can get a high-status job and make a lot of money. And a lot of them have a number, you know, a starting salary of blank that they want to achieve. So, those are the categories we looked at. This slide is really relevant to what Dr. Luthar talks about. With kids in communities like ours, where the manifestation of their behavior is often hidden, the communities that I worked with for 20 years were high-risk communities around the country. When we look... from some of our kids, even while what we're doing for them is the right thing, maybe just a little too much, you know, maybe a little bit too much for some kids. We know that some kids, mostly by virtue of their internal resources and their temperament, are going to be able to stand up well to a really high-stress environment, a competitive environment. There are other kids who really can't thrive in those environments. We have kids who are doing really well in that environment. We have a group of kids who are doing pretty well, they're doing well at what we tell them to do well at, right? So they're doing well at school, they're doing well at sports. I've done parent education all across the country for over twenty years, and one of the first things I used to do when I was, when I was working with parents is I would say, "Whatever age your child is now, fast forward in your child is now twenty-five or thirty. Imagine they're coming home and having a family dinner with you. Looking at that child at twenty-five or thirty, what do you want them to be like? What do you want for that child? First thing, wherever I go, people say, is happy." And yet, a lot of kids are telling us that the message they're getting is not about happiness and fulfillment, it's about this competitive, you know, get to the right college, get a good job, make a lot of money. In fact, we had, again, the counselor, high school counselor, tell us, he routinely says, "What do you want? What are you looking for in college?" "I want a college where I can get a good education, so I can get a high-status job and make a lot of money." And a lot of them have a number, you know, a starting salary of blank that they want to achieve. So those are the categories we looked at. This slide is really relevant to what Dr. Luther talks about. With kids in communities like ours, where the manifestation of their behavior is often hidden. The communities that I worked with for twenty years were high-risk communities around the country, where new kids were in trouble because they were in juvie. They had OD'd, they had tried to kill themselves, very sort of outward and externalizing behaviors that you saw. You knew who those kids were. Kids that are in communities like ours often hide some of the issues that they have. So it's really about, the work we've been doing is to sort of open that up and see if we can get a better handle on what's causing some of these challenges for our kids, as well as thinking about, Cindy's going to take us through some of the next steps for how we can address some of these issues, to make sure all of our children become those beautiful adults that we saw at the beginning. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I think, you know, after hearing that, it's always so sobering for me, and I think it's sobering because I know so many of your kids, I love so many of your kids, and I hear the same love from Gary and the teachers, I hear it all the time, which is, makes me happy that they feel good at school, as good as they do. It's really important. I think the important thing that I want to say before the next step is, we don't need to throw the baby out with the bathwater, there are a lot of things that we do well, and there are a lot of kids that do well, and we should take a look at when doing well, what are the pieces there that we need to make sure that we extend to the rest of our population, and that we can do that. So we've kind of given you a good picture of things that we don't want, but we can get there, and I also want you to remember that so many of our kids are thriving in many ways, and many do have passions. So we can do this together and talk about when we were in a group, what we, kind of what our next steps were. I think when we came to last spring, I think when Dr. Plama and I were here, it was talking about using this information with the youth concerns and with the professional, the professional staff, like CTC, and taking a look at how could we, how could this, how could we integrate this into the work that we do and the schools do and that our groups, our community does on a larger scale. What I put on the bond in there is really the ecological model of how we develop as human beings. So you have an individual, and relationships are really important, so peers, friends, family, and I always say this, because I think people don't really believe this, but you have to remember that parents are the most important part of a kid's decision to use at any point. And people who grow up well and say that they didn't use, they will say it's because I didn't want to disappoint my parents, or the bond was strong. And even the kids that get better, because many of our kids try and they get better, they get off track for many reasons, they also had strong bonds, which is why they could do that, could recover. So that's really crucial. The next sphere that we need to think about is schools, clinicians, clinics, YFS, other organizations that serve youth and touchers. And the rest, the bigger circle on the outside, is what we talk about a lot, which is social norms. Because a lot of the things that affect our kids and go into, why do they use, are the social norms. And that was number five that she spoke about. You'll often hear people saying, "We don't do that to her, I don't put pressure on her, she's doing it to herself." Well, you know, eventually you don't have to say anything, you've raised the kid in this fishbowl, don't know what other fish do. And so we have to take a look at what's the outer circle there, and how do we affect that? And how do we, how do we keep the things that we like, that are contributing, being somebody who can contribute and engage in the world, but also that we want you to get to the end of that road in a healthy state, and we can do that. So we'll take a look at the next steps. I've been in touch with, there were two organizations that really stood out for me. One is the group that's Race to Know Me, I think probably many of you know the film Race to Know Me, and there was even a show here, yeah, a few years back, but they were communities like ours, it's a very powerful film, and it was talking just about this issue, and it interviewed a lot of kids, and it was a parent that started this film and developed it, her child suicided, and was one of our beautiful kids. And so she, with a group of people, they were really promoting an initiative, Time to Thrive, which is that school, well, not school, but homework, and the pressure to achieve or to build a resume, that you don't parent or do life to build a resume for something, but that you do life, and if you do life and you engage, you'll have a resume. There's a really big difference in that. So Race to Know Me has a group of people that work on this, Challenge Success to Us, so I spoke with them about what are the communities that are taking us on, because our next steps are looking at communities that are taking us on, that look like us, and how can they show us some promising approaches. There's not necessarily best practices in this, it's really people who are trying to take us on at this point. We know what we're dealing with, and now we need to, as a community commander, say, let's take a stand at this. So those are two groups, I think, that would be primary in our research, and then there are other individual researchers that I think we should reach out to. I think the next step for us is that we have a prevention professional, and we look at Derek who works a lot with data, create a draft plan that we can go to our professionals. We need to go to the school staff, we need to go to teachers, we need to go to youth, we need to go to parents. And then we take a look at, in all these spheres, what role does, what role can we all play? And we're really just going a little too far. What do we want to keep? And if we want to keep our kids, if we want to keep the good things, but we really want to make sure that the whole kid's going to those places, how do we do it? So those would be the next steps. You reach out to groups, you look at what research and what communities are taking us on. Really great, as Paul Arthur, there are many communities that have groups taking us on, what school district is taking on, draft a plan for the other people, make measurable goals, you know, that you can, a strategy that you can follow in doing that plan, make sure that everybody that needs to be at that table is at the table. Let me give you an example, I think this is really, really interesting. I love going into the school because they like that little kid, and they like those chamingras, right? And it's really charming. You know that we were talking about this, research says that if you want your kid to do well, you know, have books around, read to them, there are many things that you do. If you went to school, you know, you have college these around, and it's great, and it's particularly relevant for kids at risk. Your kids are going to go to college, one, because of the economic group that you're in, and because of your educational level. So if you ever said to them, "Go to school," your kids would get the message that they're going to school. But we remind them in so many ways, so many messages every day, there are posters up about where to go to college, you're reminded every day, try hard. I mean, it's just almost unrelenting about how much we remind them to do things, and really, they're going to get that. And so I think it's more about letting them enjoy them, because they're picking that up, and they will be happy with them. So this is kind of our next steps. I said we come back and inform you, and we really want you all with us, and we really want, we have to partner with Gary and the staff, that's crucial, so I'll be a big part of it. And I'd like, all of us are here to answer any questions that you have, and any thoughts that you might have about this process.
Thank you, Cindy. Cindy, and your whole group, questions? Grab a microphone if you do have questions, just so we capture them.
Cindy, I see that it mentions your nursery out of Somannish and Isiqua. And is that the city of Somannish, or is that Somannish High School in the Bellevue District? Do you refer to compare to data, west data, focus group data, that's here, side it?
Yes, yes, yes.
It's the city of Somannish.
Yes. Dirk, you want to talk about, Dirk is our data guy, so is Victor.
It's just, yeah, thank you, it's Isiqua School District.
Right, that's what I was checking on.
We had the opportunity to look at similar data from the Lissabon High School in Skyline, so we did some comparisons with that.
Great. But what I wanted to say about Somannish is that it has three high schools within our block area. It has one from the Russian District, Eastlake, and one in Skyline, and then it has also a Catholic. And I just wondered if we have any of these same datas from the, you know, in terms of the surveys and also from the private? I know that they call them all around, but I think it's very interesting that they have those three schools so close together, and I just wondered how that data compared to ours as well.
You just, I don't see anything to say about that. Are you asking, are you looking for an answer pattern?
No, I'm just, I think it's a very unusual, it's very unusual to have three high schools that close together, and certainly the economic areas are not that different, maybe, but with the private school, then it's quite large and interesting.
My comment is, first, I appreciate all of the work, and I appreciate the work that Task Force did this summer, the time that people gave to come and talk about the issues that we all face, working with our youth here on Mercer Island. What I, a question I have for the future is, do you plan to use your knowledge as clinicians? Because you have a real practice here of doing mental health work for a whole number of years, like here on Mercer Island. And what I'm disappointed in is not seeing that research part of this work. Healthy Youth Survey is one array of data and points that I think have to be considered, but I think you have a much richer qualitative research, that you've been doing clinical work with our students and our families for twenty-some years. And so I'd like to dig into what your clinicians are finding, and how they're correlated with what students are reporting on the Healthy Youth Survey. That's frankly more interesting to me. And what I would say as your school superintendent is, I am worried about the number and the types of unsafe actions that our students are engaged in over time. I'm seeing an increasing number of more dangerous drug use, I'm seeing potentially more frequent use of unhealthy choices that students are making. And what's happening with those mental health counselors, not revealing, of course, attorney client privilege, but from the qualitative view, I'd be interested to know that. And potentially, that could be work that is, comes back to, at least to me, I'm interested in knowing that, and the degree to which the board or council is potentially a different matter. But that's what I'm interested in knowing about for later.
I, you know, Gary, if I can, would you like just to address that? I think that'd be really important here. All of these things were true with our counselors. And in fact, when we really went down this road, it was really at their urging, in a way. So these are all concerns that they really relate to this data, and they really relate to the five outcomes, and we can even dig down more on that, too. I'd love to hear your counselors, too, Gary, I'm sure that they really have a lot of stories to tell, because I think they know our best strengths, and I think they know our kids that we want to keep in that picture and keep in mind, and I think they know the kids that are struggling inside.
So Cindy, after listening to a report like that, it's sort of like you just want to crawl under the table, because you're not sure what you're supposed to do next. And I know that part of the project, then, is to look at what other communities are doing, and so I, and I guess, just so I understand where you think this is heading, the presentation started off with a discussion of families, dysfunctional families, arguably dysfunctional families, and then it talked about pressures in the schools, and then it talked about criminal behavior potentially, or behavior which would violate some ordinances that the city might have. So it's sort of like, it was, you could sit there and say, okay, the solution therefore must lie with family, schools, and city, and sort of some combination thereof. But what I'm trying to, I guess, I'd like to come out of this meeting with some feeling of hope, in that we've been, we and the school district and private groups have been working for years on this island to help our kids. And is there anything in the data which says what's working, and what we can take away from this to say that, you know, what is, what is helping families? What is helping, what is the school district doing that's helping things? What is, what is Youth and Family Services doing, which is helping the situation? Is there anything there that you can relate to us?
So I don't have a definite data points, but I can address some of the things that you bring up generally, and sharing what else, like your take on this, or Derek, if you have thoughts on this, too. And first, it goes back to the comment that a lot of our kids are thriving, and we're doing many, many things right, and we don't need to throw the baby out. What we need to take a look at is, how do we do it so that the kids aren't doing well, are getting the right messages, because we send so many right messages, but how can we make sure that we're paying attention to whole child development so more of them are doing well? Because we're comparing them to the average, and the average is unacceptable in some of the stats that we gave you, but we overflow in some of them to a poor realm. So there are many, many things that we do well. We do well, we bring kids up to do well, I mean, the majority are doing well, and I think that's important. I don't have, what I want to leave you with is that it is possible to take a look at this issue and to have an impact on it. We have lowered the drinking rate in the community, we brought groups together, people talk about this issue, people can talk about this issue. We have higher use rates by people in the schools than we ever have for counseling services, and our counselors actively work to reduce stigma, so people know that it's okay to counsel. So really, we recognize that that's a really big issue. I think we bring this up to you, and we want you to know that we're taking it on, and that we need you behind us, and that we need to continue community conversations about this. We don't have an exact game plan, but we want you behind us in developing a game plan, because we can take it on. And I'd love to hear anybody else.
On that note, I would echo the sentiment that the counselors are absolutely essential. And so could you speak to the funding of the counselors?
Do you want to shift to that? That's really a kind of a city issue? I can do that, it's just, I can take a minute on that.
Well, I think that's, what are the actual items that will result in improvement so that we, you know, have some hope of progress? And studies are fine. I sort of have a sense this is a national issue that affects a lot of affluent communities, not just our own. So I'd like to focus on, on approaches that we know are effective. And one approach we know is effective is having counselors, a full-time counselor at each school.
We do know that that helps when a kid comes in with an issue. What we'd like to do is go upstream to when they're much younger, so that we're not having these problems, and that's really a different.
That really involves the people in the other one? No, I think the point is, I don't really want to sacrifice having the funding of full-time counselor at each school for a study.
Okay. Should I address the funding? Should that be helpful? They're a bit related and somewhat related, but I think you're right, I think that counselors in the schools are crucial in this. Would you like me to shift to that, or should we stay with where I think we need to go with this endeavor?
So, just, let's clarify, I don't have a sense of whether, how we're doing in terms of time on our overall agenda. I know we've got five items, and we're still on item one, and we're almost halfway through our time, so we've got to be conscious of whether we're doing okay on that or not. And we're actually only a third of the way through item one. If there's task force update, funding challenges, and needs assessment are actually three separate things, or are we kind of feeling like we?
One more item.
You have to help me, because I don't know exactly what your structure you're hoping for.
Good. So this is, the funding challenge is really about how the city funds human services, so I want to talk about that. And there were really two separate issues, we asked for that separately. So I can give that update in about five minutes, five to eight minutes, about the city's funding structure, what's going on there, and that's a, I can take, that point is well taken, I dare.
The needs assessment, then, a third thing you're going to?
That's part of it, that is part of our human services, that's part of something that we would do in dealing with the funding challenge. So I want to let just address that for a few minutes, and we can make sure that we head back on this if we need to. So, my question would be, I was going to say something.
No, I was just going to echo that, it probably is about time to move topics, because we do want to have this discussion about the current YFS funding challenges. The needs assessment is the process we're going to go through next year to figure out what, how to address that funding challenge, so that's one discussion. But to get through the other items, we might want to shift here.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I can take a couple minutes. So Youth and Family Services, about ten, twelve years ago, we did projections on looking at how we fund our, the department, and what the programs that we provide, given the streams of revenues that we had, how are we doing, and at what point would those cross? And we are at a juncture where the thrift shop is growing out, it's plateauing at what it does, it does it really well. We have certain amounts of contracts, and we've had some cuts to contracts, and then we have a specific amount that comes from our foundation and from the city. But to do our programs, which continue to grow in cost, just the cost of doing business, salaries, supplies, things like that, continue to go up a bit each year, but our revenue doesn't. So we're at a juncture that we knew that we would come to. So within the city, we need to have the conversation about, as a city, how would they like to look at funding human services, and how can they take a look at revenue streams, what do we want to do about that? So that's on the agenda to talk about, as a city, and city funding. Part of what you do, and this comes from just a background, social services, if you're faced, and this is what organizations did during the recession, if you might have potential funding cuts, what you want to do is really take a brief, take a timeout, do a needs assessment, what is your mission critical work? So if you have full funding, great, you're going to continue to be able to do everything, but if you're not, do a needs assessment, you know what you need to do to keep your children with families and community functioning at the highest level possible. So that's, that's what it is. A needs assessment is collecting data so that you can make the best decisions financially for the money for which you're steward of public funds. So we will do that this year, at the same time that the city council takes a look at some of the issues that are facing it as far as discretionary funds and non-essential departments. That's it in a nutshell.
And I might ask Chip Cordar, our finance director, just to step up, maybe just to set the context a little bit more about the funding deficit that we see coming, and what our timing is going to look like.
Are you also going to go into this thing you told us today about the youth counselors? The two and a half versus three?
Three, thank you.
Yeah. Because, I mean, the last time the council heard about it, we were at two and a half.
We can talk about that.
I'll talk about that first. Sure, yeah. When we began in the year, we had a resignation of somebody who was doing a program at Island Park for mindfulness, so we'd worked out with them to do, to keep that person, to keep that project going, and then hire halftime counselor. then hire half-time counselor for that school so that, to bring it up to 35 hours for them. And then we said we would do nine to five hours of specific work that their parents asked for. So we did a different configuration. Since that time, the person who's doing that project has resigned. And so the person who was filling in half-time, took the half-time position, is going full-time. She's accepted that position. So now we're up to where we were originally. And we'd gone into being, to working out with Island Park president because they were really, they were very much invested in that program and was really helping the kids. So now we're back up to three, and it's the same model. So we're really going into our needs assessment with that. And if I can really clear if it's helpful, we work with a consultant to do a needs assessment because we really need to work with all of our stakeholders, and given the staff being the primary one. Also, senior services on the island, all of our youth development, emergency services and things like that. But it's pretty thorough so that you know what is your work and what funding you eventually have with the decisions that are made, what you do. So that's how we use it.
Good evening. So we're looking at about $260,000 deficit for the 15, 16 biennium. It begins a little bit in 15 and ends in terms of 16. The total for the biennium is 260, pretty sizable. What, I'll be engaging the council on this issue on Monday night. Some of the options include, we could tap our property tax bank capacity to get us by for a little bit. And we have a little bit of that here in Mercer, not a ton. Another thing I could do is, to extend that we have general fund surplus revenues this year, next year, we could save some of that to bridge the gap for the coming biennium and buy us time. But in terms of an ongoing, you look at a business model, the revenues are not growing at the same level as the expenditures that were. Thrift shop sales were double-digit for a number of years. That's how we got by. They finally leveled off in 13. Instead of double-digit growth, it's four, five percent growth, tops. And the other piece of the puzzle is, we used to have a significant general fund subsidy and about $455,000 during the recession, thrift shop sales took off, right, during the recession. And general fund revenues went down. And so to help balance the general fund budget, we did pull back on a general fund subsidy of YFS. We're bumping that back up again, but the combination of all that is why we are here today. Questions on that situation, Tana?
Does that 260, $260,000 include an additional counselor at the new elementary school?
No, it does not. It's just a three.
So I would address that and say, part of our allocation model for the future is conducting this needs assessment. We do know that we want a mental health counselor at elementary four. And as I look at the secondary schools, one school, the middle school is over 1,000 students. And the high school is over 1,400 students. And they have the same allocation as an elementary school of 550 students. But the need is greater. And so yes, it would be wonderful to address the needs of children early, but there are needs that don't show up until a child becomes 10, or 12, or 14. And those are some new challenges. So as we look at this needs assessment, we will be looking at the entire allocation. The city may tell us we have to draw this line somewhere, and then the school district will have to consider what will we need to do in order to meet the needs that we have in the schools.
If I can just add, the great thing about being an island, our boundaries are the same. And so from a residential perspective, who really cares whether it's a school district levy or a city levy? It benefits the same people. And so I'm not here to point a finger and say it should be on you, it could be on us, it could be shared. There is no right answer, but it's a great situation to have because we can solve it under the wind.
Ben's going to grab a mic.
Okay, maybe I'll just spend it just to follow on that. I don't know if this is the right place to say it, but I think if we're looking at, if we're talking about the 260 deficit, and we know that if we just wanted to keep everything even and the same, that we're going to add a counselor. And so it almost seems, I wouldn't say disingenuous, but it almost seems like we know there's going to be an additional FTE somewhere in that that would make that deficit even bigger. So if we just addressed the existing deficit, and then all of a sudden we knew that counselor would be coming back to the council anyway, asking for additional money. So I think we should incorporate it now.
I think, you know, for me, I like this idea of doing an overall assessment because while we have the practice of putting a counselor at every school, at the end of the day, the number of students more or less remains the same, although with a slight increase, I think we're seeing. But that way, you know, I think there are going to be disproportionate needs at different ages, perhaps. So to get that overall assessment, look at the total number of counselors needed, and then have the conversation about how they're distributed throughout the facilities, I think is going to be a really constructive process and certainly one I feel that I would be prioritizing.
Yeah, I think, well, obviously, I think it's great to do the needs assessment. I'm just curious, as part of that process, whether or not you're going to be looking at the business model for delivery of those services, and whether or not that model needs to be tweaked or changed. You know, because currently, you know, those counselors are, you know, employees of the city. And so the question is, is that the right business model? So I don't know if that's part of your assessment or your study that's going to take place.
Yeah, I think it definitely is. I think we're at a point with the funding and with continuing to provide the services, I think we have to put everything on the table and take a look at the service model as well and see what, as we look at the need, go through the needs assessment, what is the best model to deliver the services our kids need.
Can I ask, Adrian, what's the note? As the council member, the district may be aware of this, is, we were looking at trying to do an expansion of the thrift shop. That was actually my solution to the business model is to grow that, not make it huge, but expand the space and generate more revenue and square away the YFS fund. That needed to happen really several years ago. We were trying to look at it last year, and it just fell apart. And so that was the original vision. And now I can't put that vision off at all.
Is there any opportunity at all to work with local colleges to get students who are wanting to head into psychology or some related profession who are looking for internships or that could still possibly be in elementary schools, provide some assistance to kids such, maybe that could allow us to reallocate some resources into the high school and middle school to address what Gary was pointing out, the large numbers in there which probably require people with more professional training?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. We could definitely take a look at that. We have, we have actually an intern model with Seattle University. And definitely, that might be actually really good as we look at the next steps to keep that in mind. Yeah, point well taken, yeah.
Okay, I think, unless there's something else, we're going to wrap up that.
Well, I just wanted to mention that it is true from a resident's perspective, it doesn't really matter if you pay for a school levy or a city levy, but the schools are actually restricted in how much they can put in levy, I believe the city is.
Yeah, but people like you better than they like you.
They're not so happy when they come and say, more taxes. Okay. Brian, you want to take over on the next one?
Sure, yes. This is a topic that Gary can do the introduction on about the study on alternative fuel.
Yes, so, thank you. So the board had an interest in asking the staff to study the impact cost savings to us if we were to move to another fuel other than gas and diesel. So Todd Kelce and Glenn Betcher will approach the podium, and you have a briefing paper that you've seen in your packet, and Todd also has a short PowerPoint. And then we will leave some time for Q and As to dive into the details.
So I'll turn it over to you, Todd.
All right, very good. Yeah, okay, I have a very brief presentation. It is meant to be supplemental to what was already posted. And primarily, what I'll be talking about is school buses, but I want you to know that Glenn and I have been working together, trying to find kind of a common path. And because a lot of the things that we're kicking around, you know, are very similar for his needs and school buses as well. Okay, so I guess to start us off, you know, as I look at it, 10 years ago, there were virtually no alternative fuel vehicles out there in the United States, or very few. Now there's about 3 million in the United States alone. I think it seems like a good, a healthy, sizable portion of those seem to be on Mercer Island, in fact. So it's only obvious for us to be looking at, well, if that's the case and that's the trend, then we should be looking at it for our vehicles within the school district and within the city as well. So there are a lot of different options, but really, it's going to boil down to what you see on the screen here. It's interesting that Glenn and I worked together, I'd say six or seven years ago, something like that, on the very first one, biodiesel, which is still, you know, a viable alternative fuel option. But what we learned then, after a considerable amount of time and effort, was that the pros that you can see up there, which do include less exhaust pollutants and domestic production and things of that nature, were most certainly outweighed by the cons, including some environmental concerns that were only uncovered as more and more biodiesel was generated and concerns became evident. There were some other things that made us realize that biodiesel within our vehicles really wasn't a good way to go. So we, like in the school bus industry, kind of lagged a little bit and watched some things unfold. And really, then, what we saw were the other three options being played around with at the engineering level and within some districts. One of them that you hear a lot about, compressed natural gas. There are large school districts, particularly in California, that run a lot of school buses on compressed natural gas. Why not? It's, as it says, pros, it significantly reduces exhaust pollutants, domestic production is almost 100 percent, and the price of the fuel is relatively low. But the cons are beyond what we can absorb, I believe, within at least the school bus industry, or at least on Mercer Island. And that is the cost per vehicle, right now standing at about a 30K uplift for a light-for-light vehicle. And then the really shocking sticker here is the fueling stations. In order to have a compressed natural gas fueling station, you're looking at, between the fueling station itself and other modifications that you need to make to shops and so forth, because we're dealing with methane. Methane can be very volatile. You're looking at over a million dollars to create a fueling station. And so that's, at least when we try to pencil things out, that gets us into a payback in the vicinity of some thousands of years, and that just kind of didn't make much sense. So we've kind of moved on from compressed natural gas. And I think you'll see that, at least in the school bus industry, the industry at large is moving away from that as well. Diesel electric hybrid, you see those buses downtown Seattle. Reasonable question, why can't we do that with school buses? I think the extreme price difference between the vehicles, like-for-like, at nearly $100,000 is one of the big reasons. Another thing is that the industry, there's really only about three main manufacturers, they just didn't get behind it. They threw out some options, they were very poor options, they didn't work well. There's not a single one of these buses operating in the state of Washington right now. Despite it being on the state contract for people like me to purchase for years, it just wasn't, it's just not a viable option. Battery replacement and the battery replacement schedule, I mean, the costs that can get away from you are pretty terrifying. And they just don't work well for us. So, leaves the next one, propane auto gas. This is one that actually, speaking for Glenn, I think we're getting a little bit excited about. Propane, like compressed natural gas, significantly reduces exhaust pollutants. It's about 99 percent domestically produced, it's virtually all North American, mostly in the United States. The price is very inexpensive, as you'll see, and the fueling stations are relatively inexpensive. In fact, if you have enough demand, there's a good chance that you can get a propane vendor to actually pay for your fueling station. The technology that's required is not much more sophisticated than what you use in your propane barbecue. Okay, there is a con, there are several cons. The vehicles are right now running at about $10,000 more for a propane engine than a diesel engine. And although we're excited about these new engine technologies, for example, there's a company named Roush, if you're into stock cars, you've heard of Roush. They've come up with some innovative technology that's done away with some of the concerns that we've had in the past about torque and power and things like that that have kept us from being interested in propane in the past. There's some other things that we, from watching districts work with this, they don't have all the bugs worked out yet. I think they're getting there, and the technology's looking pretty solid. And it makes us think that the industry is probably going to coalesce around propane. What you see here is some figures based on school district averages and fuel prices. So as you read down there, you see diesel unleaded, compressed natural gas, and propane, the vehicle uplift is, I've already discussed, for CNG, it's about $30,000 more per vehicle, $10,000 more for propane. Then you see the cost per gallon. Now, that's, in terms of CNG, that's not exactly a gallon, but that's effectively the same, same kind of measurement. I will point out that the propane number at a dollar is a little bit on the low side, but it still pencils out to be something that we can see a payback with in the lifetime of the bus. But as you see the like-for-like comparisons of miles per gallon, we're going to do a little better with diesel oil unleaded compared to any of the other two alternatives. But ultimately, as you read across and you look at the lifespan of a bus for us, and a big bus is 13-year lifespan, that's depreciation cycle, you're going to see, at least with propane, and propane's the only one, an actual cost savings in fuel over the lifetime of the vehicle. It may be five years is a little aggressive, it may be closer to six or seven, but we can actually see this penciling out and making sense on a cost basis for the fuel. The other thing about propane is that it requires less maintenance cost. There isn't enough information out there to really assess what that means for us, but we know that it will be less. For example, oil changes alone, for a big bus, we would use 10 gallons less for every oil change. So there's some things the industry's starting to see that look pretty interesting about reduced wear on engines and improved costs in maintenance. Okay, so that's the cost analysis. And where we're looking at going forward is, we're cautiously optimistic, sometimes we're really excited, and sometimes, you know, I'll talk to another director and I hear that their propane bus that they were excited about, it's all shiny, there you go, has been sitting there for two or three or four weeks waiting for somebody to figure out what's going on with it. So excited, but cautiously optimistic. So what I want to do, what I recommend that we do, at least for the school district, and again, I think I'd say, from talking with Glenn, he's probably pretty much on the same page, is, let's monitor the other pilots that are underway. More and more districts are taking on two or three or four of these buses, and we're in contact with them. Bellevue happens to be one of them. They have two little buses, and they're taking two bigger buses on soon. And I think we can learn a lot from what they're going to be doing over the next year. So assuming those programs are successful, my next recommendation would be to go ahead, at least for the school district, and take a little bite and buy one Type A, that's a small bus, and put it into service for the 16, 17 school year. And really analyze that thing, top to bottom. How's it doing? What kind of fuel mileage are we getting? What are the real costs? And do that in conjunction, potentially, with a similar pilot that would be going on with the city. Obviously, not a school bus, but a propane-fired vehicle of some sort. And during that pilot, because we won't have critical mass to really have our own fueling station, I think it would be wise for us to throw in together and have a joint fueling station. And we already know that that's viable on either of our properties for any of the vehicles that we would use. And then, again, assuming that we're successful, I would then say, you know, if it has been successful, we could see ourselves replacing all of our buses potentially on the depreciation cycle. Not all at once, but just as they depreciate, beginning as early as 2018. And my final thing is a picture of a Type A, small Bluebird propane-fired bus. And you know it's propane because it's got those really cool disco green stripes on the side. And I can't wait to see one of those as long as it's operating, you know, 100 percent of the time. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you. Todd, just a quick question. Someplace the report says that they're not making, or that Type D buses are not available in propane yet. Will they be soon? And what's the pros and cons versus the C?
Okay, that's a great question. There is no Type D school bus available with propane right now. And we require those for our big buses. Bluebird, who is the one that we buy most of our buses from, tells me that within the timeframe we're talking about our pilot, they expect to have a Type D bus. They don't have it yet, but the way it usually flows is based on volume. And the volume is going to be traditional, which is Type C. I think the second part of your question is, Type C, some years before my time, they had a consultant come out here and look at our roadways because the director supervisor at the time thought, whoa, we could save a little money, wouldn't it be better to be able to buy these Type C buses? And it's just not viable. We just, the way that they operate and the tail swing, they just aren't safe around a at the time thought, whoa, we could save a little money, wouldn't it be better to be able to buy these Type C buses? And it's just not viable. We just, the way that they operate and the tail swing, they just aren't safe around a lot of the roadways that we have to travel. So we go with transit style, so we have to wait until they come around. Did you have a question?
That was my question.
Okay.
The garbage trucks on the island have converted to natural gas. I hope the city council had something to do with that. Where are they being fueled?
You're correct. Those are, vehicles are being fueled at the Republic offices in Bellevue. So it's not realistic for us to share that fueling facility, although I talked a year or two ago about the possibility of doing that. Travel time makes it prohibitive.
There is a public fueling facility in factoria though. Wouldn't that be possible, at least for a demo?
I haven't been there in a while, but I'd have to go look at it, make sure we can get a bus in there and so forth. There's another thing about the fueling that maybe you saw in the report, and it's got my attention, and that is that natural gas fueling takes longer. And, you know, we have to now bring a bus over there and pay somebody to do it, and have them stand by while the thing's fueling, and that adds up. So it's just a consideration, but I could, we could go take a look at that facility.
Well, it does take longer, but Honda's been selling natural gas cars for a long time, and they work okay. Yeah, it takes a little longer to fill. My only concern about propane is that it actually is environmentally questionable. It's nice when you got it, and the supply is relatively fixed. It's a byproduct, essentially, of oil production and gas production, and you don't actually make it.
Right.
So that's why it's, from here in North America, you don't export it from Saudi Arabia. So the price would tend to fluctuate depending on the demand. Natural gas, on the other hand, is a primary product that you get out of a hole in the ground, and the prices, they've got to stay pretty low at the present time while they still have a lot. I just wonder if some more serious attention can be paid to dealing with natural gas instead of propane, because it does work. Yes, it does cost a lot for a fueling station, and that's an issue, but no, it doesn't make a difference. Difference if it's on the state list, you can get a bid for a propane bus, or sorry, get a natural gas bus whether or not it's on the state list.
You certainly can, but I would say too, the organizations that have most success with those are high-mileage types of organizations, and we're low mileage, and so we'd have to go in with our eyes open, knowing that we're going to pay that uplift, and we're going to turn that bus over at the depreciation, at the end of its depreciation, and not have come anywhere near making back that uplift and the cost savings of the fuel.
One question. Are the, with either propane or natural gas, is there an option to retrofit existing buses? So if you have a newly purchased bus that's 10 years from the end of its depreciation cycle, can it be retrofitted to either of those fuels, or only new purchases?
It's, I know that there are retrofits for non-school bus vehicles, but the state takes a dim view on us trying to do much retrofitting with school buses to begin with. They just kind of like them as they are, and the state inspection goes forward, and this is what a school bus is supposed to look like and be like. But then, again, you're looking at a big cost differential, so I'm not aware of any organization that is taking that on, but there are retrofit packages available for other vehicles, and Glenn might be able to speak to that.
It's conceivable during that 10-year period that new technologies may emerge, and it may become more cost-effective or easier to do that as well. It's just that you can't predict that yet. We don't know. But that...
Two quick questions, one, Todd, for you, one for Glenn. You mentioned fueling time on the CNG, there was no mention of fueling time on the propane. I was just curious whether that's short or...
It's very similar to just standard diesel.
Okay, so it goes pretty fast.
Yeah.
And then the second, for Glenn, is from the city's perspective, how do you see proceeding over the next year or two or three on this? Are you imagining that we're buying a few, a single type vehicle?
Yeah. We're targeting a couple of vehicles for the next biennium. It didn't take Todd and I very long to realize when we started talking about this a few months ago, that we're in exactly the same place. It's time to start taking a look at the technology, because it's been out there long enough, and it's important to be in the feedback loop, so we're telling manufacturers and dealers, here's what our experience is like, but we want to do it cautiously. And I mentioned just on CNG, one of the big hangups for the city would be, we need to fuel on the island. That's about after-hours response, it's about a police officer, it's about a lot of things. Taking 10, 15 minutes to get factoria back, that's a problem for us. We'd really need a fueling facility on the island.
Anything else? Other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, all right.
All right, so, yeah, next topic is update on the building projects.
Yeah, so Randy is going to make her way, owner representative, Randy Fox. We make her way here, and we are excited to tell you that we're happy for our former tenants. They are all landed, new homes, and thanks to you to help with Country Village, to Dan Graus, deputy mayor, for helping them with all of the friendship and opening doors for them. So we are feeling really good that demolition has actually begun this week on the north campus. I did invite board members. I don't know that we have any time to...
Time is running out.
Running out. So if any of you around the table wanted a nostalgic walk through those classrooms, you need to tell me before the meeting ends tonight.
Yeah. Good evening. I didn't bring, excuse me, any graphics tonight, I'm a little quick. I know you have a full agenda, but I'll give you a quick update on each of the three projects. The high school is big, Pavilion Construction is our general contractor. We are well underway with footings dug, Rebar arrived on site today, and just working our way through a rainy season. So, but so far, still on schedule and within budget, and things are proceeding nicely. We were able to get the parking lot project done this year, this summer, which is a full year earlier than we had anticipated, and although we still have a bit of congestion out on 42nd Street, it is a marked improvement to what we've had in the past. So we feel pretty good about that, and I think things will even get a little bit better when we can get buses back on 92nd, when the project is finished. So we'll reassess them and see if there's anything else we need to do. Elementary school floor, as Gary mentioned, we have, both tenants are out of the building at this point. All three youth leaders gone, but Child's in their new facility, Country Village is in their new facility. We had a grand total of 36 hours from the time Child walked out of the building and dropped off their keys, and our contractor showed up with an excavator and tore the front door of the gymnasium out and headed straight into the gym. So, maybe a little close to my comfort, but it all worked. We were able to salvage a lot of things out of the North Mercer facility, which will be great. We salvaged the wood floor from the gym, we sanded it, and stripped all the boards, and we have them in a storage facility. They'll be going back into the new elementary, so that's kind of exciting. All those lockers that we put in about five years ago in the North Mercer Gym that were never used have all been saved, and they're going back to the Islander Middle School project when it's complete. There's some wood benches that were in the locker room, so anything we could save, we did, and our housing nut to go back into the new facility. We have a great demolition contractor so far, it's still a honeymoon stage, but very pleased with who we got in a low-bid arena. So we are on schedule at this point to have the abatement finished end of the year, beginning of the year, and then we'll be out to bid for drawing some of the elementary school. We go in for permit tomorrow, big day for DSG, a big day for our design team on the elementary school. And I'll just say that the city's DSG staff has been incredible. They have been an amazing partner in helping us get these projects done in a timely manner, so thank you to all of them. Islander Middle School is progressing well. It's a few weeks behind the elementary school in terms of permitting, which is actually helpful with the staff here. It would be tough to review them both at exactly the same time. We had, I think, our eighth neighborhood meeting last night with the Lakes folks, and did kind of our final look at the buffer between their property and ours, and have selected plants and trees that grow the right heights for different people, and they're all very excited about the project, and we're really pleased to have come to a happy spot with all of them. So, portables are out of the way on that, and again, same schedule, we plan on starting spring of next year. So, questions?
Could you take over our fire station project?
We'll need to ask Gary about that. I'm a little committed at the moment.
On your own time, I don't...
Yeah. Been a little busy.
Questions?
What's the topic completion date for the elementary and for the elementary? So both of those are scheduled to be complete the summer of '16, so we'll start the '16-'17 school year in the buildings.
And in high school, the 10 classrooms are slated to be ready for the fall of next year.
Yeah.
So, Randy, I just wondered if you might want to mention something about the goats. Don't let people know that we're going to have some goats.
Well, Tony's had a few other priorities, but we have been talking about the potential of bringing some goats in to do clearing and maintenance on detention ponds and some of that. So, it's a good segue though into the other thing I wanted to mention, which is, we are doing a construction update on all of the projects, so for those that are in construction, I'm doing my very best to get photos and updates out on a weekly basis. For the elementary and the middle school design process, it's a little less frequent. But the district's website has a link, and you'll get the latest and greatest weekly update about what's happening and great photos of interesting stuff. Or maybe not so interesting, but it's interesting to me, so.
Anyone else?
I want to see the goats.
You want to see the goats. It's all about the goats, isn't it? Yeah, okay, we'll work on that.
Well, and our next topic is on community solar, but in your vision paper, there's quite a bit of discussion about some of the environmental features of these new schools. Do we want to touch on that a little bit before, or is that a good setup for the solar discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we have tried to be really wise about where we have incorporated, how we've chosen to spend district money on green technology, and so both, both the elementary and the middle school will be full LED. They both have small green roof components, as much as a learning tool, as really, you know, heat gain, a lot less heat gain. We have incredibly efficient mechanical systems and building envelopes, and then both buildings are being designed with the capacity for 100 kilowatt arrays of solar panels. So we're bidding those as alternates, and depending on where the budgets come in, we'll decide, we're bidding them actually in segments of panels, so that we can choose to do a third of the panels, or half of the panels, or however, how much ever our budget will allow us to do as the project progresses.
100 kilowatt arrays are a heck of a lot of panels. How much electricity do they produce in our, on our location in the course of a year?
I think it's about, the energy offset would be about $10,000 a year worth of power is what they would produce. And we have, we actually have roofs on both projects that can handle that array. We can't do it in Washington panels because of the efficiency of the panels, but we can do it in a higher-efficiency nationally-produced panel. So we're designing our roof structure, the infrastructure for the conduit, the space in the building for transformers, and again, bidding it as an alternate, but we'll just have to see where things come in.
How many panels are you bidding?
Pardon me?
How many panels are you...
I'm not sure of the total number. I'm not sure. About 100 kilowatt hours. But, I mean, it could be a 50 kilowatt system as well, just depends on how, what funding's available to do that. The other piece of that, of course, is that both schools have green dashboards that allow all of those elements to be used as a teaching tool. So for example, at the elementary, there's a weather station that's tied in to that green dashboard, so that you can see the solar activity and how that's changing, what we're getting out of panels, and wind and rain, and all those different components, so...
Like the pretenders were children, you're running out of gas or electric?
Yeah.
I think if I recall correctly, it's like 250 watts per panel. So if you're doing 100 kilowatts, that's 400 panels potentially.
Yeah, I was thinking, it's between 200 and 300 with the higher-efficiency panels. I think you're using the Washington calculation, which are not as efficient. But we have a challenge on this, we, you know, there's a lead into the community solar project. You know, there's some interesting options for doing the community project to fund those. The challenge on our two schools is that by the time we have a roof, that those panels can go on, and an infrastructure in which we can feed the power back into the grid, there's not enough time left for a payback, given the current 2020 or 2018 end date. So, but, you know, that may be extended, and it may be an option to put 75 kilowatts up on the roof of each of those as a community project. So, again, we're designing them and permitting them and bidding them with the infrastructure to do that.
I think Todd made that a campaign promise.
Yeah, we are working on it.
I'm not so worried about the payback, but what about, what do you do when the roof leaks underneath all those solar panels?
Well, so that's part of what we're able to do on the high school, on the two new projects, is that we're using a standing seam metal roof, and so those panels clip on without any internal attachment. Yeah.
It comes along, we clip them off and...
We clip them off if you need to.
Yeah, that's my mistake. There you go. We'll do that. We'll move on to community solar. Randy, don't go far.
Okay.
I think Dan and I, we're going to just tag team and pull you into this as well. I'll start it off just with a quick definition of community solar for those who don't know. So there exists a, within state law, an opportunity to pull together investors and create a solar array that would gain a higher payback from the state if it's using Washington components than you can get doing a system at home. That goes through 2020, as we're just talking about. And what we're looking at is the fact that we've got this solarized Mercer Island campaign going on, with lots of folks interested, some folks signing up, many folks disappointed that they weren't able to put solar on their roofs, because it turns out they've got trees or they've got other issues with their homes. And so the thought is that we can provide an alternative for those folks, as well as others who are interested in contributing to a solar array. The idea at the moment is that this would be an array that would be put onto the high school, onto the gym at the high school, which we've been told now is an excellent location, except that the roof is old, and then there's also the question of structural integrity of the building, which I think you're working on. But, and so then, separate from that, there's the whole legal structure question. So to the structural question, we'll go to Randy, and to the legal question, we'll go to Dan, and I'll sort of hand it off at this point to you folks.
Yeah, so we have determined that we can get 75 kilowatts up on that south-facing upper roof of the gym at the high school. Our structural engineers looked at it, he thinks it's close, but that it's workable without doing any kind of big retrofit underneath. We do have a challenge, that we have a two-hour construction, and so we have two layers of sheet rock, which didn't dawn on me when we were walking through there, but we may need to take some of that sheet rock down and provide backing. Another option could be that we do a metal roof when we re-roof the building, and then we could clip. So we need to explore that a little bit further, but I think either way, it's doable. It may not be quite as inexpensive as the initial quote that we got, but not outages either, so.
And from the perspective of timing, we mentioned 2020 is when this runs out. What we've been told, from the standpoint of folks who've done these systems before, and it was penciled out the cost and then the return to the investors in this, it would be essential to get the system installed this winter, so that by the time the sun starts to be useful in the spring, the system's up and running, if we want to have a payback for it, which means, of course, they've been backing that up. We've got to, of course, figure out the legal aspects on the investors, but the school district would also have to figure out the roof replacement if this were going to successfully happen. So there's a question for you folks as to whether you're willing to be supportive of that. In the long run, what happens is that the system goes on, the investors have put the money in to buy the system. Over the coming five years, the... Over the coming five years, the investors are getting their money back each year. At the end of the five-year period in 2020, the idea is that the system would then turn over to the school district as a school district asset, and the power generated from it would be an ongoing benefit to the district. Estimated at about $5,000 a year.
But that has to be, I'm not sure we can commit to that going into it, for, at least what the tax lawyers are telling us, is that if you commit to turn, just hand over to the school district, you can compromise the tax benefits that potentially are there. So we have to be a little bit careful on that. But I mean, at the end of the day, I think you could work something out, so one way, and the other, the school district gets the benefit of the, of the power. And you can do that through a rental arrangement or whatever. I think it's all doable. And a lot will depend upon what the legislature does in terms of extending the incentive and whether they change the terms of it and whatever. As Bruce said, right now, we're just, we're right at the edge. So based upon existing law, if we get this in place by the spring, spring of 2015, this still pencils out. But that really means the school district unfortunately has to decide almost in the next month or so, whether it's going to do the roof, whether it has the money to roof. And then we need to sit down. As to how this works from a legal standpoint, and whether that can be done in a way that's satisfactory.
Dan, I think you should.
Yeah, whether that can be done in a way that's satisfactory to the district. But it's, it should, I mean, at the end of the day, that all the district is really doing, other than replacing its roof, is agreeing to rent the, to rent the space on the roof to, at essentially a relatively nominal rent. And then it takes the power, and it gets advantage of the power, so it's basically at a, it gets the power at a fixed rate, which ultimately saves it some money, not a lot. I think in the numbers that, well, some of the numbers we saw, we're talking about, you know, six thousand, maybe $6,000 a year, and it's, you're not talking about anything that's going to be a game changer financially for the district.
So where we are presently is, we've been studying the issue, and we, the staff and I believe this is a green light, that we can continue, we can proceed. So long as the structure of the roof could handle the number of allows that were needed, we believe that we have capacity in the capital budget to replace the roof, but we want to bring that to the board. Our preliminary study is that this is doable. We can do this. This is a great show of partnership, that we're partnering with you. So that is a fund that we have some ample resources. We can't buy counselors from those funds.
Unless you put them on the roof.
So I, for now, I think if you were to ask me, and the board members are hearing this really for the first time, our preliminary study is that this is doable. We can make this work. And to put a little bit of a sense of what this means from an investor standpoint to you, and Dan, you'll stop me if I've gone too far, because we have, we know there are some restrictions, we have to be careful around securities law on this, but what we believe at this point is that the optimal sort of investment look to this thing is something like $25,000 from 16 investors, who would essentially break even or come out and hit ahead if everything goes as expected with this. Or you go to, as somebody asked Tanya yesterday earlier today, can you, you know, we could have smaller investment amounts and more investors, but that's roughly what this ends up looking like.
If you have no passive income, it's a great investment.
Seattle, Seattle and their aquarium has done a similar kind of project. They did very small investment numbers, and you could go as low as, somebody said $500 was an investment amount. Ideally, you do larger investments and have less administrative challenge, because you just have fewer people that you're trying to work with over the course of it.
The state caps you at five, maximum $5,000. Maximum $5,000 per investor from the state per year. So if we assume we've got five years to run on this thing, that's why Bruce is using the $25,000 as, as the sort of basis for what you're investing. If it turns out you find investors who happen to have passive income, then there are a lot of other, this thing pays off very well. But without passive income to offset or to take advantage of the investment tax credit, you really can't, you're limited to basically what the state pays you back from, in this incentive credit.
So one question, Dan, if you have done some research around the area with different municipalities that have entered into this agreement, are you aware if in the Lake Washington area, that they have done a similar arrangement before?
Well, we've, the ones I've seen so far are Vashon and Bainbridge.
Okay.
And those, you know, those were also with PSE.
Okay.
And, yeah, I mean, they're relatively straightforward, and it's just a question of finding, in this case, 25 investors.
Okay.
Or 16 investors, 16, yeah.
So school board members, just let us know whether you want to be in for 25.
Number.
I think that's, that's all we've got. Brandy?
Yeah, I think we, you know, we move on here. We have about, you know, seven minutes, so I'm, we're short on time for the debrief on the water, but.
On to that. I guess Noel, you're.
Actually, Gary and I talked earlier this week, and we decided to not do that tonight, in part because the city is still in the middle of, what Gary talked about, maybe having this sort of a lessons learned session, just to get the city perspective on what we learned during the boil water advisory. And if you haven't heard, the advisory has been lifted. Happy to announce that here tonight. So we're going to, we're going to do that at a later date. Just so the school board knows, as you probably read or heard, the city is still very much in the midst of trying to figure out how the contamination occurred. We don't, we still don't know that. We've engaged a nationally-known expert on water quality and water systems, who is going through our entire system, looking at what happened, looking at the E coli results, and trying to help us see if we can identify a cause. So that's part of what they're helping us with. And then the other thing they're helping us with is just a continuing mitigation strategy to try and make sure it doesn't happen again. So that work has just started, there's a lot to be done there, but we'll be reporting back to all of you, sort of next steps as we, as we learn more.
And if you've got questions, I'm sure we can tackle those. We're not ready to do lessons learned, you're right, but we certainly could talk more about immediate questions that you might have. I know we had a lot of them over the last few days.
One thing that I think is, would be a fruitful avenue as we do our assessment of this, is how we can work together to communicate. Because you obviously have access to emails and contact information the city doesn't have, and vice versa. So somehow, we need to, we found ourselves in the situation, from outsider looking in on this to some extent, we found ourselves in a situation of not being able to contact as many people as we wanted. We depended upon the reverse 911 system, which we know had issues, but even if that had worked perfectly, a lot of people now don't have landlines, so they're not going to get the calls. They may not be home, they, whatever. It may just go to voicemail, and maybe five hours before they listen to their voicemail. So, but people do seem to be checking their emails, their tweets, their Facebooks, whatever. So I think that there's got to be an opportunity, and it probably is working with your lawyers to see if there's privacy issues, but there has to be some notion that in an emergency, you know, we can work with you to, I mean, not asking you to give us the information, but that you can somehow trigger your system to send something out at the same time we're sent, went sending something out, so we can maximize the reach here. I think that should be an area for full discussion going forward.
I want to say, Gary, we can't do that. In fact, as I think about it, the PTA is the body that actually creates and maintains the databases, and we have an agreement with the PTA to access the Constant Contact database. So a thought I have is to bring in, in our layer, to craft that agreement and how that partnership works. So a question may be, can the city, as a mutual partner in the community, also enter into this freeway agreement where you can also send through Constant Contact? Because you have to think about, once we, once students become, students in the district, once families register, there is a ton of work that happens on a monthly basis when parents come into the district, new ones, or indoor, when parents change email addresses. And so we think about the thousands of parents, and some of them have three or more email addresses. And just that work alone, so that's all volunteer work, and we benefit from all of their work in doing that. The second thing I would say is, I really appreciate Noel and Ed, Chief of Police, Ed, who contacted me. In fact, I was in Southern Oregon on that Saturday when you learned, and I got a call from Ed, I got a call from, a text from Noel. So I knew on the weekend, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, that there was an issue, and then all of the coordination that occurred in those ensuing days. So I sort of look at this as the great dress rehearsal, where we didn't have life and injury imminent, but it forced us to think about what and how we communicate, should that eventuality ever happen. And we appreciate all of the coordination. And as in every aspect of life, everything can be improved, and so I know that we'll look back and reflect on processes and in ways in which we can continue to improve the relationship in reporting. And I would just say, as an observer of much of what was going on in the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center, that I think there was, there was great collaboration going on between our staff and school district staff, as well as with the outside agencies, the Seattle and King County Health Department and the State Health Department and others. And so thank you for being good partners in all of that, as we were working through a very stressful situation. Others?
Well, I just wanted to say that it was sort of interesting to talk to people. It was a little bit like, you know, where were you on some sort of national event, Evan? But I have a number of friends tell me that they heard from their children in California before they, you know, knew what was happening, or from New York or whatever, because all the young people were on Twitter and, you know, Facebook and everything else, talking about this. And I know, I personally, I got two calls from my sister-in-law, and I had seen her an hour before, and I thought, oh my God, something's happened in the family, because there were two calls, but she had heard the news release, and I hadn't. And I mean, so it's really interesting to sort of see how we all found out. On the other hand, some of us got 16 emails saying the same thing. And so, so it is great to be in a community where people are willing to share and make those phone calls to neighbors who maybe didn't hear the information and so on. So I think we're very lucky.
And one other comment would be that, sort of midway through this, there was an email that came in saying, ah, from a parent, saying, I think I know what caused this, and talking about a incident at the school with apparently a drain getting clogged, and they thought they found the smoking gun. And thank you to your staff for quickly tracking that back and figuring out that, no, indeed, that was not the, not the cause, but I heard the buzz, that the school was, the students thought they'd found it. Yeah. Anyhow, Tanya.
We hope.
We talked briefly, as the council is making sure that we use this as an opportunity to educate people and remind people to be prepared in an emergency, and especially as we saw the run on grocery stores for water, clearly people are not prepared for emergencies. And so hopefully, as we develop whatever strategy we want to do to get people to be more prepared, and remind them, using this as an opportunity, hopefully the schools will piggyback on that, and we can remind slash educate our communities about how to be prepared for a disaster.
And I guess, and the other takeaway, and thank you, please, that's really an important one, but the other takeaway is, as we all know, citizens were impacted by this, but businesses were heavily impacted. And so we urge everyone to dine out frequently in the coming months and weeks, and we hope the district will help deliver that message to our citizens, get these businesses back to home. Well, we are nearing the end of our meeting, and what we thought would be important, fantastic, I see the third or fourth student writing momentarily, awesome. So we thought it would be nice to, we recognize students often at our board meetings, and this is a special recognition in that students are recognized before the city council. And so before we break in the study session, I'd like to call up Principal Vicki Puckett, and a number of students are here to be recognized, and we'd like to publicly recognize them in front of you. This is one of the favorite aspects of a board meeting. I think even board members might say it's a favorite for them as well. So if Principal Puckett would approach the podium and have students join her, I know there are a number of parents in the audience. We have four Mercer Island High School students named National Merit semifinalists. And for those of you who may be unaware, the National Merit Semifinalist Corporation, an independent, non-for-profit organization, was established in 1955 to conduct the annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Since its founding, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation has recognized 2.9 million students, provided 377,000 scholarships worth about $1.5 billion. In the advance to this, this program, students submit an application, including essays, examples of extracurricular achievements and leadership positions, and finalists typically, about 15,000 students compete for scholarships worth about $2,500. So with, behind me, I'm going to ask Principal Puckett to introduce three of our four semifinalists, and perhaps we could get them to say a word or two while we're on public television.
We told them, clean up your act, because you're going to be on TV. So they don't normally dress this way. Well, take that back. They do, some of them do. So first of all, I want to thank you for giving us the time to recognize our students. It's a fun part of my job that I get to do, and we, what I appreciated with Dr. Plana is that he always makes a point to recognize our students and the good work that they're doing, and in all different parts of our school system. And so at the high school, this is pretty cool that we get to bring four students before, our fourth one, I don't know what happened, but we reminded that it was a room, who knows? That these students are set apart nationally, and that's a pretty cool thing. So I'm going to ask them to introduce themselves, and again, they're one of 16,000 semifinalists for the 59th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program, and we want to congratulate them. And all systems, could you introduce your parents that are in the audience as well tonight? Because we all know that it takes not just school, it takes our families that help support the school system here, and also, of course, yourselves. So we'll start first with.
Rock, paper, scissors.
Hi, my name's David Emanuel. There's my mom, Annie Emanuel, right there. There's my dad, Brian Emanuel. It's also his birthday, so it's all, anyways, just really thankful for them. And then also, Ms. Puckett, you want me to say, I'm looking to go into medicine and become a doctor when I'm older. Not politics?
Hi, my name is Lauren Su. That's my dad, Dr. Kuyan Su. My mom couldn't be here today. She's taking my brother's soccer practice. And I would like to go into medicine as well.
Hi, I'm Lewis Lamb. Those are my parents, Hal and Lisa, and I'm there, and I'd like to go into computer science.
And Card and Chuck could not, is not here tonight, but he was our other National Merit semifinalist that was recognized. And again, I want to thank all of you, and it's a great opportunity to be able to put these students before you, and happy birthday.
So members of the city council and members of the school board, please join me in congratulating these three students. So I would just have to ask, based on our earlier conversation, but are you happy?
Yeah. Do you love your parents? Would you lie to them?
Okay, I think with that, we're adjourned.
Yeah, well, the school board is recessed for ten minutes.
We are allowed five minutes.
Reconvene at 7 o'clock.
You guys get to rest and food.
Yeah.
Thank you for last night.
Good luck.